I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport Public Schools for our school committee business meeting for Monday, November 4th. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Decanter.
Here.
Mr. Cole. Mr. Bennen.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Mr. Hawke Isak.
Here.
Mr. Riden.
Here.
And Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. We have one absent, but we have a quorum. Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance and please bear with us as we use a graphic on the screen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We are at our period of public comment. If there is anybody who is here in the audience who would like to share a short comment with the school committee, please keep it to two minutes. You can come up and sign in so that we can get your address for the minutes and feel free to share. Do we have anybody? Seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda. Mr. Decanter, do we have any warrants?
We do. Have a warrant. I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $115,467.67 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment.
Move to second.
Second.
Discussion.
Will there any conflict?
No conflict.
Second.
Hearing no comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One absent. We also, is that, that was the, that's the only one?
That's the only one.
Terrific. We also have two sets of minutes. Will somebody move the minutes of October 7th, 2019?
So moved.
Do we have second?
Second.
Any changes, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. One absent. And we have minutes of 10:21, 2019.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Absent.
One abstention. I guess I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Gallagher.
All right. This is the, our annual and actually monthly recognition of some wonderful students and staff. And tonight, we'll be recognizing Charlotte Kaylee, sixth grader, who created a professional grade education materials about the dangers of vaping. So last week, or last month, we recognized a high school student that really took an active role with vaping and vaping prevention. And Charlotte, last year, knew about the dangers of vaping, learned in class, and took it on her own to develop part of our science fair, this wonderful project. So we utilized that at the vaping forum, and she was also a greeter. But I'd like to have Kathy Ricchio come on up and add a few more comments about this great young leader of ours.
I absolutely would like to do that. That's why I recommended Charlotte, because her poster that she created is right over there. And it was such a professional and knowledgeable piece of work. I used it during all the schools' open houses for the parent education. And parents would read it and ask me questions. And I had to really study to make sure I knew all the answers that Charlotte already knew herself. But she also, you were just so helpful during the forum. You were quick to jump to the quick and greeted everybody. And it was really exceptional work. I want to thank you so much. Thank you.
Ms. Ricchio, do you want to get in the photograph too? Yes, Steve's not here. Come on up. Congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work. You go. Hold on for a little certificate.
No, just the opposite.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. And our next students that we're going to recognize. And I'll allow Ms. Nancy Cruz to step up and really to give a little bit more background. But last month, two of our EL students from the Mullen, Gabriella and Arthur, were inspired when they noticed in the cafeteria, there was this big bulletin board that was empty. And they took an initiative, and this was what's awesome about the Newburyport students, all students here, took an initiative on not just to fill up the bulletin board, but really, do you know who makes your food? So they really took initiative for all the cafeteria workers. They met with them, they interviewed them. And as part of the school committee packet, they have this beautiful bulletin board with all of the cafeteria workers who's serving them. But just amazing students at such a young level taking initiative and to really make our school system a better place. And I love to have Ms. Cruz to step up and kind of talk about these great students and all the things that they do.
Well, I have the great fortune of working with them every day. But this really was an initiative that Arthur and Gabriella took on, on their own. And sometimes, we think there are adults working behind the scenes. But I have to say, in this case, it really was their creation, their design. They came up with questions to interview our cafeteria staff, met with each one, interviewed them, put together all of the answers. I helped type it. But Arthur was very artistic, and he helped us with the design on where to place all the papers. And Gabriella definitely was our author of our heading, who, do you know who makes your food? But it really was in a child-centered creation. And they didn't want anybody to know that they did this. So now it's out there in the public.
That's out of the bag.
But that just speaks to how humble they are. And so it wasn't out of wanting to be recognized. It really was, they felt like our cafeteria workers, nobody knows their name. We don't know what to call them. We don't know how to say thank you to them. So that's really what started the ball rolling. And if you have a chance before you leave tonight, it's right outside the door. If you take a left, and you'll see it on your right. So. Thank you.
All right. Do you want to come on up? Come on up? Ms. Cruz, I want to come on up also? Gabriella, congratulations. Awesome job. Thank you guys so much. There you go. Awesome. So you didn't want anyone to know?
No.
16,000 people are watching this right now. All right. Thank you so much.
Usually, at this point, we just take a couple of minute break so that we can spend a little time with the families and the kids and congratulate them. So we're just going to break for just a couple of minutes. All right, I think we are ready to start anew. Our Newburyport High School Student Representative, Peter Ambrosia. Ambrosio?
Yep.
Is going to share some thoughts with us on what's going on at the high school.
All right. So I'm just going to give a little bit of report of what the high school has been up to in this past month. So there's been a really, really strong emphasis on student leadership. Close to 100 of the high school students have experienced leadership training over this past month. Started off with Essential Partners. Over 27 of our students experienced training with Central Partners on how to facilitate dialogue. And tomorrow, after the half-day, these students will be facilitating a dialogue around the Val and Sal topic. So that's going to be a really great opportunity for students. We also had our sports captains work closely with a man named John Sullivan from Changing the Game Project. And they pretty much, they attended a leadership workshop. And then, last week, 39 students took part in a training with the Anti-Defamation League to become peer trainers. So these students will be able to lead their classmates around complex social issues to strengthen tolerance, respect, and understanding throughout the building. And at the middle school, 35 students were also trained in these, as peer trainers. And then with Student Voice, the student council is in full swing at high school. We had our first meeting last month. And then our second meeting is this Wednesday. During our last advisory, council representatives gathered input surrounding the Val and Sal topic and surrounding sophomore semi, if it should be a great, a great oldie dance, or should you be allowed to invite other upperclassmen. And so through student council, the voice of the entire school was heard. So it's not just a select few. Everyone has had a say in both these topics. And the, our next advisory is Friday. And it's very career-centered, and it's going to help students focus on college and careers. So grade nine students will reflect on their results from their career and learning style survey. And they'll be able to explore strategies to support their daily study habits. Grade 10 students will learn about the Future Directions Fair, which is now, I believe it's annual now. But this fair is going to expose students and to presenters from different career fields, and will allow students to learn about paths that they're able to take in their, any careers that they're interested in. So during their advisory, all sophomores are going to complete a career interest survey. So they're actually going to know, like, oh, I'm really interested in this industry, this industry. And then they're going to be able to meet with companies and representatives from companies in the industries that they're interested in. So special thanks to the Newburyport Business Coalition, Energy X Hospital, Strong Chemical, and NEF for really supporting this event. And then, finally, for grade 11 is going to be participating in a presentation from the Barimac Valley Workforce Investment Board. So these students are going to be just getting a presentation about the future in-demand jobs, as well as understanding all the resources available, available to them through this organization. And then seniors are going to be able to use this time to work on their college applications and/or job applications. So advisory is really becoming a central part in our high school curriculum. And then finally, just an update on sports. The girls soccer defeated East Boston 11 to nothing this weekend. So congratulations to them. And I was just updated, I was just updated that the boys soccer defeated their opponents 4 to 0. So they're going to be moving on in this state, in the tournament.
Okay. What's next on the agenda? Oh, late start. The next topic on our agenda is implementation of later start. And what I wanted to ask the superintendent before we formulate a plan here is, just what kind of feedback did you get? I know we did a forum for the community. What kind of feedback have you gotten since we promulgated the plan?
Yeah. So once we, we came up with the draft plan, I think it was about a month and a half ago, you know, we presented to various stakeholders, obviously the faculty and the staff, at a volunteer faculty meeting, and received, you know, we went through the whole process, the same presentation that we provided to the school committee, received positive feedback on the plan. And I think the details, once we move forward, and the staff will be included on, you know, some of the different aspects of bringing, you know, two schools together, and then the high school with the scheduling committee. But I think we're in the, in a great place. Received, I think, a lot of positive feedback from parents. We sent out the plan, the summary sheet, to 3,800 families. So, and then gave the school community an opportunity to come to the public forum to voice, you know, concerns or questions. But overall, I think the, the plan is pretty solid with, with a lot of support to move forward. So I think we're in a, I think we're in a good place, you know, for the, the school committee. I know Bruce and school committee, Harkiza was there, school committee member, was at our public forum. So I haven't received much input or negative input over the, over the draft. So I, I think people are ready to move forward, and, and we'll see what happens.
Motion to approve Superintendent Gallagher's plan for implementing the late start for September of 2020.
Second. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say thanks to Sean for doing, in basically a year and a half, what we couldn't get done, for whatever reason, in six years. And I would thank J.I. Nene and Tara Sullivan and Alex Correa for beating this many years ago, and having tenacity to keep coming up and bugging the school committee to get it done. I'm very excited and happy about it.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I echo that. Just Sean, great job. I don't know how it was so easy, but it's nice. We were able to come up with something that checks off so many boxes for so many people, which is great. And of course, the parents that kept us going for six or seven years, however long. I want to single out Dave and Brian, too, for on the school committee level, to keep it going, and keeping everybody honest, and keeping the conversation going. So thanks to you two as well.
And what I greatly appreciate is the fact that at one point, we were talking about having to introduce another seven buses at tremendous cost. And you were able to work out a system that any additional resources we need would be in the schools, not spent on transportation. And I really appreciate that, Sean, because that's not what we want to spend our resources on, more buses. So, really well done. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments?
I think we should take a roll call vote.
There should be a roll call vote.
I just have, I just want to, I wanted, the, taking all the, I mean, because you talked about the five years, there was all the surveys and all the input, our individual meetings, which I really just collected a lot of that information that was already done. So I didn't do any hard work here. I think the community did all the hard work. We just, we just kind of figured it out. And I came up with a plan that I think meets the needs of all the stakeholders within the community. And I'm just really proud of Newburyport, and I'm proud of Newburyport school, school system, really taking a lead in the KPN. So you all made that job easy for me, because there's a lot of resources and input that was already available to me in my office.
How many, how many other districts in the KPN league have gone to late start?
Will be, will be the first, so.
So Sean, I would just like to differ with you just a little bit. All of the hard work that was done before by school committee and by parents and everything else is akin to creating a jigsaw puzzle. You put the pieces together to make it work. And that is a lot of work. So, thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah, I, the, the process of bringing people together about this was, was really a good model for going forward. And a number of issues. So I am very pleased.
I would just say that it was, it's nice that the research actually played out and drove us. So we can listen to science. In today's day and age, that's just not done nearly enough. And I would say that truly, this is an example of doing something that's for the students, because adults have a lot of reasons to gripe about this. But we all know this is what's good for kids, and we made that happen. So that's a nice sort of benchmark to remember with other initiatives as we move forward. It can be done, hopefully in less time, but it can be done.
Mrs. Kennedy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Bennen.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hawke Isak.
Yes.
Mr. Decanter.
Yes.
Mr. Riden.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Holliday.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Great. Cool. The next item is an update from the high school on the Val and Sal conversation that's beginning, or has been going on. So I would invite Andy and our, I assume our guests up as well? Yeah, we do.
Yeah, I think so. So while Angela is setting up the PowerPoint, just to introduce myself, obviously, I'm Andy Wolfe, principal of the high school. But I'm here tonight with John Soref and Nadia Brock, who are both part of an organization called Essential Partners, who have really been helping us.
We're bailing on you.
That's cool. It makes the presentation a lot easier. And they've, they've been really helping us to kind of map out our process to take on. I don't know if it's going to get up on the screen.
Oh, it's not up there?
It's warming up now.
All right. And just give me a kiss.
Yep, definitely. And I do have to warn you, I'm a big fan of animation, so it might be multiple cues. I don't know if it has the signal.
I'm not there?
You got to use the recorder. Yeah, I think it says question mark.
Source.
Question mark?
Uh, no, source. Great.
Someone over here? So HDMI, do you think?
Yes.
Yeah, it was working fine. I think I was on computer.
Ooh, it's possible. Yeah, there is a, there's a cord hanging down there.
Can you guys do shadow?
We may have to. There we go. All right. So last year, during the May school, I think it was May 20th, school committee meeting, where we had the conversation about what to do with valedictorian and salutatorian, now that the public schools no longer issue rank. And the high school administration was charged with coming up with a process to really collect input and feedback around how do we go about defining valedictorian and salutatorian. So in really trying to think through the process, really, the ultimate objective from my end really stems from the whole idea of work we've done last year with the high school faculty, but then also soliciting feedback from our students, and then parents during our parent alliance meetings, on developing a vision for our high school graduate from Newburyport High School. And even though, you know, we're still working out the actual language of the vision statement, because we've got, we got a lot of, we learned a lot about what makes a good vision statement. Usually, they're short and a little bit vague. But then realizing that you can really deconstruct them. And where, where we all really got to last year as a faculty and with the students is identifying these essential skills that we want our graduates leaving with. And so as we kind of went through this work, in terms of trying to map out our process for engaging in this conversation about valedictorian and salutatorian, it was really realizing this is an opportunity for, you know, for engaging students in some civic engagement, realizing that there's the social-emotional skills that come into play in terms of understanding how to engage in dialogue, especially on an issue that does have people on opposite sides of the table in terms of their perspectives of how these two terms can be defined. And then just the life skills associated with coming up with a process that allows people to express what their values are, and then kind of come to the table and really feel heard as we work to construct, in a sense, definitions. And then the other part, especially for our students, is just the communication skills that will really come through all of this as well. And so that was really kind of the mindset in moving forward with all of this, is really the, being charged with defining valedictorian and salutatorian. It's really the tool for us to engage in a process and model how to have constructive dialogue, especially in this age where online discussion, I suppose, I don't know if you'd really call it dialogue, is really the norm, and really takes on a divisive tone for communities. You know, I, I hear about it in where I live in Swampscott and with friends in other communities, just sometimes with what happens with this online conversation that happens. And I feel that this is a very important process we're taking on to model how to engage in constructive dialogue. So really, step one was to build our capacity to facilitate dialogue. And through an opportunity, I was connected with John and Nadia, who are both from an organization called Essential Partners. And they're going to come up and talk to you a little bit about the work that their organization does. But we were invited to apply for a project that Essential Partners is currently involved in. And really, where last year, and a lot of the learning that I had taken on at the school, recognizing that we had a need, we had a big need to provide more opportunities for our students to have leadership opportunities, but to really provide them with, you know, good leadership training. Because there's a lot to, we tell students all the time, we want you to be leadership, we want you to be leaders. But we have a responsibility to provide them with the resources so that they really understand what is involved in all of that. And as Peter spoke about earlier, we've had multiple opportunities. We're close to 100 of our students, whether it's been through the ADL, some of the captain leadership, and then the work that also Peter's been a part of with 27 of his peers with Essential Partners, on really understanding the dynamics of facilitating dialogue, which they are going to roll out tomorrow. So I think we're ready for the next slide. And so actually, without further ado, let me introduce John Soref and Nadia Brock to talk to you a little bit about Essential Partners.
Thank you so much for having us here. Thank you to Andy. Thank you to the committee for allowing us to speak a little bit about the work that we've been doing. Essential Partners has been around now for 30 years, supporting communities that are divided about some important issues based in their values, equipping communities to talk across differences to support their thriving. We've done this all over the world. In Nigeria and Burundi after the civil war, we've done this in the Philippines, and we've done this in Finland and in Jordan around the refugee crisis. We do this all across the country, in colleges and universities, and in cities and towns, in faith organizations. And so what your students and your teachers have been doing for the last few weeks in learning these skills, are the same skills that are being learned by facilitators all over the world who are trying to find ways to bridge differences, to engage communities, to heal after divides. And we have been so impressed by what these students were able to learn in a very short amount of time. And I, we remark, every single time we leave after a training, your teachers as well, the level at which they're asking questions about how the work is applied is really unreal. I mean, we teach adults and college students I mean, we teach adults and college students and often don't get as far as we did with your students. There's something really remarkable going on in these schools, and you should be proud of it. The opportunity we had to work with you came through a grant that we received to learn how to do this work with high schools. We'd done some of that, but we realized that high schools were a place where this kind of leadership was really being sought and where the students were going to be expected in just a few years to go off to college to live in communities that invite diversity into their midst and ask students to live across those differences. And so we reached out to a number of schools all across the country to see who wanted to be part of this. And two schools rose to the top, Newburyport and the leadership of Principal Wolf, and a school in Cody, Wyoming, where Nadia and I just got back from a week in Cody, Wyoming. The hope is that the students and faculty from Newburyport will connect with the students and the faculty and parents from Cody, Wyoming, and begin some dialogue across the differences that we see in our own country. So there's a hope that that will happen too. Just a word or two about the purpose of dialogue and why we have been doing some of the work here. The work that Andy and his group are gonna be doing is certainly trying to come up with a definition that works for everybody, but the first part of that is understanding. The first part of any conversation that has been one where there are different people coming with different perspectives is to set the agreement off to the side for a moment and give people an opportunity to talk about what they really care about. Talk about what's most meaningful to them. And so the purpose of dialogue is to foster mutual understanding, but to do it in a way that increases people's trust in each other, increases people's relationship and respect for one another. And so what we saw even with the students talking across their own differences, this desire to ask each other questions, to learn more about one another. And then, in that process, to gather the values, to gather the criteria that people are most interested in, and give it over to the task force to make a final recommendation to the school committee. I, I have just been so impressed by the way Andy and the entire administration has dealt with this, invited us in, the teachers, the students, and we're grateful to you and to everybody who's helped make this process a possibility. Thank you for having us.
Okay, so tomorrow is our, our really next step now that we feel that we've built capacity for our students and 14 of our teachers to really help facilitate this community-wide dialogue, which we invite all of you to participate in if you do have the time. Tomorrow, starting at 11:30 at the high school, we're gonna start in the auditorium and then make our way into the cafeteria. And one of the things that the students learned, it's about circles, and we are gonna have a structure in place so that our circles, which would have about people of eight with two facilitators, so that you have a mixed tables of students, teachers, and members from the community and/or parents. And then the biggest part in the work that they also did was they realized that when you go about in having dialogue, first of all, a clear understanding about what the purpose of dialogue is. That's very important that everybody understands the intent of what's trying to happen, which John just explained, but then also the rules of the dialogue. There have to be rules, and that's the next slide there. So the students, in part of their work with John and Nadia, they came up with their rules that we'll share with everybody tomorrow, and these are them right here. And then as they engage in the process, it's a commitment at the table that all participants in the dialogue are following these rules, so that the discourse is civil and really trying to get to the heart of, you know, where Newburyport is in terms of what does it really value in regards to how we go about defining those two terms. And so then that really leads us, and so again, this is step two, which I just went over, which is about collecting the input and seek to understand the values. We've kind of done this in a couple of ways, realizing that, you know, we are doing this during the school day. It's an early release, so all of our teachers will be there as a part of this, because this is also structures that they can then bring into the classroom. Because we were asking our teachers as they're engaging in their curriculum, looking for opportunities to tie that curriculum to what's going on in the world today. And sometimes those conversations in the classroom can be scary to have, but with appropriate tools in place and rules, you can have a civil conversation that really energizes students in terms of making the connections to what they're studying, to how it applies in certain debates that are happening in our country or even around the world. So, back to what I was saying, so realizing that not all people from the community would be able to attend the in-person dialogue. We did have an online forum that we were able to push out, and thanks to Heather, we were also able to get a link in the newspaper. But then also, through the Naviance program, we were able to push it out all the way back to when the whole conversation about doing away with class rank happened back, I think in the class of 2016, 17. So we forwarded the link to the online survey to our alum and their parents as well. And so anybody who was interested in providing some feedback, we're able to offer that online. And then tomorrow is our in-person dialogue, which will be led and facilitated by our students and trained teachers as well. And so then that leads us to step three. So after tomorrow, we'll have a task force, which will be of some of our trained students and staff, with really the expectation of using what is gained from the in-person dialogue and the online input to really synthesize that and try to come up with a definition that we are then able to present to the school committee on December 16th as we were charged. And it's really my hope that through this whole process, and I have to admit with everything that I've also learned through the whole experience with Essential Partners, is that, you know, the definitions that we do share in terms of how we're gonna move forward with valedictorian and salutatorian for the school committee to vote upon, that all participants, whether it's through the online piece or during the in-person dialogue, that they feel their voices were heard and valued in the final draft. And that's really the charge of the task force. It's not for us in that task force to really do a lot of the thinking. It's to take what we gain from the in-person dialogue and the online input and really try to identify the values of the community and make sure those are applied to our working definitions for Val and Sal. And so that is it for our presentation in terms of the update of where we're at. But hopefully you really do see it. It's really, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, wherever we land with the definitions, it's, you know, where we land for me, it's really, it's really about this process that we're taking on and what our students are really gonna take with them for when they leave us.
Thank you. Any members of the school committee have any questions or anybody on the panel? We would have to suspend the rules to take a question from the audience.
If I just suspend the rules?
Fuck, it's fine. Great, we'll take a question from the audience then.
I think this is all amazing, and I will say right up front, I am not a fan of the getting rid of class rankings. I'm just curious, how will you quantify all of these things and put them into deciding on who is valedictorian and salutatorian? I guess my, my concern is you've, you've got a population of kids, and yes, it's great to build leaderships, all these things, amazing things, but you've got a population of kids that, they're not sports stars. They're not, you know, they don't, you see awards in sports, you see awards in art, all these different areas, but academically speaking, this is what they've got. This is so important. And I know, you know, in our family, this is hitting hard, and it, it makes my blood boil. It bothers me, because you've got quantifiable data, and I know that, you know, yes, times, times are changing, but I, I'm just curious, this is a lot of isoteric stuff that's kind of squishy, and how do you make that, I don't know, how do you make it work?
And that's, um, that's our objective is really, and I'll be honest with you, even just looking at the input from the online component, you can already see values and trends that are emerging, and it's really getting down to those patterns and using those patterns to identify really what goes into the language of the two distinctions. That, that's really where it all kind of comes down to. And the patterns are definitely very apparent in the online piece, and it'll be interesting to see where, at the dialogue tomorrow, part of the work is everyone at, in the circles will have their opportunity to talk about what they value and kind of what their story is in terms of what led them to those values in terms of these terms. But then at the tables, really trying to identify, you know, hopes in terms of what they, what they, values or criteria are part of those definitions. So it's really doing the work to narrow, narrow it down for the task force. And then looking at all of that input on the chart paper from each of the tables should hopefully really help guide the work of the task force.
But it's never gonna go back to being based on just grades?
For the?
Valedictorian and salutatorian?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Alright.
I have to wait, it's really, it's the process, and we have to see really where that leads us. That's really what it's all about.
Could I ask a name?
Me?
For the record.
Robin Marino.
Robin what?
It's Ryan Callahan. License plate 758, Robin Marino, M-A-R-I-N-O, Robin's an I.
Anytime when I was growing up, anytime the police would inquire about us in the neighborhood, we would always say, our name was Bart Gaber. And they'd say, Bart, we've talked to you before about this.
So, I guess I have a question, and that's about the opportunity people have had to understand why a few years ago now, we moved away from class rank.
That's a great question.
Because I know the discussion that we had at the school committee, the discussion, the public comment we heard at the school committee in May, and the online survey did not start with a foundational explanation of, this is why it changed, this is how the process started, these are the conversations we had over a length of time. And so I've been reading, unfortunately on Facebook, and hearing live a lot of the same discussions we had years ago. And so I'm curious as to whether or not and how people tomorrow will understand why a, why it was brought up in the first place and why we voted to do away with class rank. And now, like, because the reason we're here now isn't because we voted to do away with class rank. It's because there were a number of sound educational values and philosophies that went into the decision to do away with ranking kits. Does that make sense? And it doesn't seem to me as if a lot of the feedback we're getting at this point has an awareness of those decisions, of the things that drove those decisions. So that's my, my first question. My concern, and I hope it's really not much of a concern, but at some point you're gonna come to us with a decision, right, with a plan?
Recommendation, yes.
With a plan, with a recommendation, right? And so... Because we're not necessarily part of the process, I always get worried that we are either going to force to be, to vote yes or no and have it go away. So how do we ensure that there's an opportunity for a middle path that says, we understand some of the things that your committee has recommended, but we're still uncomfortable with some things? Does that make sense?
I think so.
And I just want, I just want that to be in our consciousness moving forward. Like, this may not have to end, or it may not want to end, or it may want to end. I don't really know what the recommendation will be. But as someone who gets to vote, but I don't get to hear what I'm voting on until like 10 minutes before or maybe two days before, depending on, on the big reveal, it sometimes feels a little uncomfortable for us.
And that may be something that could even be pushed out well in advance of the 16th. Because I'm hopeful that we're able to do the work.
I guess my real question is, if we say, I like some of this, we like some of this, but, you know, going forward, we're a little murky about this, can we reconvene whatever group it is to rethink certain aspects of it? Like last year, Superintendent Gallagher brought us a calendar and came back four successive meeting times afterwards because we were playing around with some things. Does that make sense? So I would hate for this to all boil down to an up or down vote at one night. More concerned though, right now, because, especially because the dialogue is tomorrow, is, is there a way to help people understand why we did this? Or is that not even part of the process?
Part of the opening tomorrow is to give some, and a lot of the communications that I've already sent out to the families, really trying to give that historical context, just in regards to, at least the, the history behind it.
Right, I'm thinking about the philosophy.
Right.
Why, why did we do away with ranking? Not that we did away with ranking two years ago. You know, I always liken it to the signs on the highway that said, you know, fasten your seatbelt, it's the law. But I'd rather fasten my seatbelt because it's gonna save my life, right? So I understand you're doing this, and people understand that we're doing this because the move away from rank, but the bigger why is all of the other discussions we had. And ultimately, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I would bet that we've put a lot more thinking into this than some of the people you're gonna hear from tomorrow. And so I'm concerned that... The other thing I'm concerned about is that at some point in December, we're gonna hear from this, and we may or may not agree with the recommendation, and people are gonna say, the school committee doesn't listen to the community. We overwhelmingly voted for this, we overwhelmingly supported this, and you guys aren't listening. Well, like I said earlier, if we don't think it's good for kids, we might vote against it. And if they don't understand why we don't think it's good for kids in advance, it's gonna feel like we're not listening to the people in the, in the community.
Well, I think we just crossed that bridge and we get there, because we don't know. I mean, you have skilled facilitators, and the comments that I think both the facilitators have presented is really encouraging in terms of the level of dialogue that's happening here. One thing that I would ask is that if we could have what you've sent out to parents, I'm not a parent anymore, so I don't get any information that you send. So if you could send that information to the school committee, that would be really helpful. I don't know if everybody else has gotten that information either.
I think we have sent that out, right?
I did. I filled the survey out 20 times.
Yeah. I think we should have that in one of Sean's emails.
But will we send that?
Yep.
I would, I would like to just put my policy walk hat on for a second and explain the process so that we are aware that this is a, a policy decision. Policies go through two readings, so we will have a chance to receive the information that Andy and his team present to us. We will have time to digest it, to think about it, and to discuss it again before voting upon it. So it is a, at least a two-meeting process, Dave. It's not a up or down vote on the first try.
Is that gonna be, Nick, is that gonna be just a two-policy subcommittee meetings or two whole?
Policy committee.
In, in addition to policy?
It can't go through policy committee first, but it can also be taken to the committees of the whole.
Can I just ask you something?
And I, I've read all the articles and I looked at the survey, but, you know, is there gonna be a discussion around class rank? Are you specifically just looking at what's valedictorian and what's salutatorian?
Valedictorian and salutatorian.
So just, you know, the vote for removing rank was one of the first things I got to vote on when I got on the committee, and, you know, I agreed with a lot of it, and I still do. And I, you know, because of my job, I'm able to talk to a lot of consultants that work across the country, so I, you know, I, I ask them this all the time, you know, what are you seeing? And I, and I hear it, that most of the, you know, most progressive and... And I, and I hear it, that most of the, you know, most progressive and future-focused districts are doing away with class rank. And it's not, you know, it, you know, it's not, you know, an indicator for college now, they're not really looking for that, because there's so many other, you know, factors that are going into that. So, you know, this whole thing around valed sal, I mean, I just, I hope there can be some sort of discussion, and I guess we'll just have to wait and see, but it's got to be a way where we can still honor the one and two kids, because our grades haven't gone away. I mean, it's very easy, we're going to have those, that data. You know, still honor excellence and maybe even honor tradition, but still, you know, some of the things that, that, you know, hit home with me with class rank, and I remember sitting in that auditorium at NHS when I got my class rank when I was a junior. You know, and that can be a pretty awful thing for some, for some kids, and it can be, you know, maybe a motivator for other kids, but, you know, I just, I hope that, that discussion is, you know, I hope kids still want to recognize excellence and maybe stick with tradition, and maybe just, you know, define it as, "All right, maybe you're not top in your class, but maybe just computer, you know, maybe you just have the highest grade point average in class instead of calling it class rank." I don't know, I just, I hope that's part of the discussion, because I don't know if we need to redefine words that already have definitions, but just, you know, just find a better way to do it, maybe. So, I don't know, I just hope, I hope we hear from students and, and parents, but, you know. So I, I say all that, and that, that the consultants I have talked to say, "There are districts that are doing that, that are, you know, sticking with your valed sal, but, but really doing away with, with, you know, broadcasting ranks." So, I just, I think that's an option. I don't know if we've really talked about it, but I mean, I think, I hope it's, you know, part of the discussion.
Andy, I have just a question. And you can check me on this assumption. I'm assuming that the conversation is not going to be so much to redefine the words valedictorian and salutatorian as it is going to be to identify the values that the school would like to celebrate.
Correct.
And, and how we do that is, is, you know, is going to be part of that conversation, but there's, there's no intention to not be celebrating excellence. Academic excellence, artistic, whatever, whatever possible ways we can celebrate excellence, that's kind of the thrust of the conversation.
Right.
How do we do that?
And correct me if I'm wrong, the objective of the dialogue is to really get at the overarching values of the community for everybody who has participated, and really using that to frame how we look at those, those two terms. Just, but also realizing that those two terms historically, yes, they have been tied to your highest GPAs, but also at the same time, you know, what they are is they're your graduations. Where the valediction is kind of your, your farewell, and the salutatory address is your But the objective of the, the dialogue is to really get at those values and really use that to really, to think about what happens with those terms. It's possible, there's the possibility that it could be how it's been. That's why I just don't, I didn't have a good answer, because I don't know where we're going to land. It really is contingent on where the values of the community are at.
And the voices...
And then using that, go ahead.
The voices that are being invited, are they the kinds of voices that we hear right now? What's important to me is that a child who's not athletic and that has academic, you know, thinks that, it's important for me that those children have an opportunity to be recognized. You know, it's important that we honor excellence. When we think about this definition, I, I, I think it's important that we honor excellence and, and respect tradition. These are the kinds of values and criteria we're inviting the task force to listen for and use as they begin to think about how to define and valedictorian and salutatorian, what role those, those terms will play.
Nick and Brian.
Okay. Again, trying to go back in, in my recollection of the discussion that we had when we charged Andy with, with doing this task was to define what we meant by excellence and how to recognize it, including the use of valedictorian and salutatorian. It wasn't specifically to decide what to do with valedictorian and salutatorian. I think the direction that the school committee gave was, how do we define excellence and how do we recognize excellence across all aspects of the Newburyport high school experience? And so I think, from that point of view, I think, at least that, I know that's what drives me in, in evaluating what, what you might say to us, is how are we recognizing excellence at, at many different levels? Because there are so many different experiences within the high school that, that, that our pockets of excellence deserve to be celebrated in a very public way. And then there is this big thing called graduation and speeches that go along with it, which perhaps is a culmination of all of those other forms of recognition. And we need to understand how we can bring the appropriate factors into play in that, and that perhaps it's not a single metric that defines who these students are that are speaking on behalf of their class.
Andy, I don't know if the parents here know that, so when we got rid of class rank, then all of a sudden you guys went through the handbooks and you're like, "Oh, there's no way to tell who is valedictorian and salutatorian that's in writing." Like, there's nothing that says it's the kid with the number one GPA. And the same goes for the speeches, right? There's nothing written going back to the fifties, or whatever the oldest book you found, that even says anything about it that's accurate?
In terms of the speakers are...
Who's the speaker and why? Other than it being, have always been done that?
Those, those as being the speakers, I think just traditionally, they were the speakers.
That was part of the whole thing, right? In the handbooks going back decades, no one ever wrote that down. This person gets the best grade, that's why they're valed, and they do the commencement speech.
Well, and that was where we ran into the conflict, it did have the definition that...
I don't know if parents know, I mean, I know, but I don't know if any of the information that went out to them said, the reason, this is what Dave was talking about, you know, we did the vote a couple of years ago, and then this happens. I don't know how many parents who don't come to every school committee meeting, it's kind of a joke, everybody, because you guys...
No, it's nowhere...
I, I don't know if they know, and is it in the information that you've been sending out to the high school parents? That, here's the background?
No. Yeah, nothing to that degree of specificity, other than that now that we no longer issue class rank, we're in a position to define valedictorian or look at that, how we look at valedictorian and salutatorian.
I wonder if it would be a good idea to put that in there, because I, we got two emails tonight with people supporting keeping them as is, and what are you guys doing? And they live here and they have students here and they don't know.
Right.
Anybody else, school committee people? Right, that was the white paper you suggested.
People don't know why we did what we did. And so some of the things you're choosing to say about our choices or this decision is way over the top.
Or they're simply forgotten, because the initial thing was two years ago.
Right.
So, I think it would help, maybe too late for tomorrow's event, but to put out there, it's simple, right? Here's what happened, A, B, C. And here we go.
I was Francis Bresnahan's secretary in nineteen sixty-one, and when he became superintendent, he instituted what he called a blue book, which was about this thick that had every single policy of the school district in it. And there was a policy in there on valedictorian and salutatorian, I saw it myself, but as the years went by, that book got smaller and smaller, and then when Francis died, it went gone. So, but I can tell you, at one time, there was a, a page in that blue book that was dedicated just to valedictorian and salutatorian, but I can't prove it because I don't have it, but I, I mean, I was here, I, I, I used to have to keep that book up to date all the time.
I remember that book.
Do you remember that?
Well, it, it was handed to me when I started twenty years ago in two loose leaf binders with seven hundred and fourteen pages, because I counted it.
I mean, it was this thick.
Yeah.
How could you not?
It was. And I found policies in that book that have been in that book since nineteen forty-four without ever being reviewed.
And God help you if you highlighted one of those policies.
I, I just, you know, the comment, for me, it really comes down to this, I, I like a conversation around honoring excellence and defining what excellence is. And I, I've been to nineteen high school graduations, including one for each of my kids, but one for everybody's kids. And I, I have, I have always wondered why we never got a speech from the kid who put four hundred hours of volunteer time into a food pantry during their high school experience. Why did we never, we just never heard from those kids and what, what motivated them and what they wanted to do with their lives? So, that to me is a, is a kind of excellence that we really haven't been honoring. And I, I don't think it's either or. It isn't either or. But boy, there are some brilliant artists in school who never get to talk about what, what it means to be a high school graduate trying to make a life in the arts. So, so I, I really want to encourage a conversation about honoring excellence, all kinds of excellence. And that, that's very encouraging to me, and I'm really looking forward to this process and, and what, what eventually will, will come to us to talk about. So, that's, that's my two cents, and that two cents hasn't been any different in the last nineteen years.
And please, by all means, if you do have time, you know, tomorrow, to be a part of the, of the dialogue. For one thing, just to see, obviously, the students in action with the, the new skill sets they've developed, and then the other part, to be a voice at the table as well, where it's not necessarily any decision happening, it really is just about getting, getting, helping us identify the values of what we want to recognize in terms of excellence here.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
The next topic briefly is to talk, just a, kind of a debrief on the vaping forum that we had a couple of weeks back. Were there other, how many school committee members were able to get to that forum?
It was just us.
Yeah, it was, it was us. There was a lot of really good information, not only about the issue of, I found, not only about the issue of vaping itself, but what our district is doing. And I think probably one of the most exciting parts of the forum is hearing about the very recent expansion of services for kids and families struggling with addiction that Linkhouse has, has done. That they've opened up essentially an outpatient clinic that is, that has people who are skilled and ready to work with individuals in the community struggling with addiction. That was, I think, really important information for me. Dave, is there anything you want to add, or Sean, anything you want to add?
No, I mean, I, I think at some point we're going to have to figure out a way to help everybody understand what was laid out, so what the options are and what we're doing. You know, I don't quite know what the vehicle for communicating all that is, but, you know, even if there were a thousand people there, that still doesn't represent everybody in the district or in the community, or who might be struggling with this. So, we, we need to find a way to, you know, bring all that information together in some sort of viable, here's what you could do kind of moment.
Yeah.
So, I guess that's...
Maybe, maybe, maybe bring together some sort of handbook that's a snapshot of what we know and what we're doing, and just keep updating. Like, you know, we can talk about that. Sean, anything that you took away as a superintendent?
Well, I think first of all, I think this problem vaping and, as we were talking about other substances is, you know, it's a, it's a community problem, a community issue. I think the greatness of Newburyport is all of the different people and different organizations that are willing to work together to help our students and families. I think that was the, the big factor that I took out of this. And then also our process that we have in place. So we've shifted from discipline in the sense of if someone is caught, you know, we'll look for suspension and really making it a discipline issue. And I think with the research and the information, working with the healthcare providers, we've kind of really looked at this as a substance issue with the increase in the nicotine. So we've developed, I think, programming with in-district programming for our first offense, and then we've partnered with the PASS program out of Beverly for our second offense, and we, I think, have really done a, a great job in the sense of identifying the issue for the students and the families, and then to provide the support for them. So we've really looking at providing support and creating, I, I think, a safe environment for those students and families to get help. The other piece is we've taken it to another degree and really encouraged students with confidentiality of self-reporting, where if they feel they have a issue with vaping, nicotine, or any other substances, they can come forward. And the good news of that is we've had a couple of students disclose, and they're getting the help that they need in a confidential manner accessing that programming, so...
So are we being active about that, like through the athletic and extracurricular programs, like letting them know the point is to get you off the vape, not suspend you for two days?
Yeah.
So we, we know all about the zero poli, zero tolerance things.
I think this is twofold, that's a great question. So first, if a student is caught, this is an option, you know, instead of discipline. But through the MIA and the policies that they have in place, the substance policies, if someone is caught utilizing a substance, they do forfeit the twenty-five percent.
Right.
But we've reached out to our entire school community and really talked about confidentiality. So if we do have a student athlete or another student that's involved in extracurriculars that feels they have a problem, that they need help, they can get help without disclosing, you know, that they're, they're an athlete and all of that type of stuff. So, we're really taking a proactive approach and working with students and families at the high school level and middle school level, and providing them the supports that they need in a confidential manner, so it's not disclosed. So like you said, Dave, it's almost get ahead of it. So if there are people that are, that need help, but they're afraid of getting caught, they can disclose before they get caught, so we can get them to help. And I think that that's, that's our philosophy. It's always been my philosophy as an administrator, teacher, and a coach, is, you know, there's, the advancement of prescription drugs, substances, and the, I think, the increase in potency is something that, you know, as a, as a parent myself, is something we worry about all the time. It's, it's a lot different than it used to be. So, I think, I think we're on the right path, and I think we have a model program in place for other school systems to take a look at. So five years ago, someone was caught vaping, we'd automatically suspend with no support. And now we're really understanding this problem and providing students and families with the support they need.
I think we're continuing, from talking with Kathy Ricchio, the idea of having a curriculum that we're teaching is very important, but that it is virtually updated as information is happening. So that curriculum may change. I mean, I think one of the, what brought it home for me was, was, was hearing that for, for jewels, that one jewel is the equivalent in nicotine of a pack of cigarettes. And when I was a kid growing up, somebody who had a two-pack-a-day habit was a, was a smoke stack, was virtually. And these kids are, are doing three, four jewels a day. And so the speed at which they're becoming addicted to the nicotine is, it's staggering at this point. So, I, I strongly support the initiative that, that looks on this as a, as a problem with addiction and not a problem of behavior. Anybody else, Dave, nothing else to add for that?
No, that was really it, the communication piece. You know, and then I, I guess the next step questions are around other substances.
Correct.
Like, so we have this huge program for jeweling, but, you know, what are we doing for cocaine in the schools, if there is, or marijuana in the schools, or drinking at, at prom, or something like that?
What's, what's great about the PASS program, and that... What's, what's great about the PASS program, and maybe at our next school community, I could give a lot more information, especially when we're on, when it's televised, is they deal with the one substance, but there's also the mental health aspect behind that. So, if there are other substances, or why someone's utilizing substances in the sense of, you know, self-medicating anxiety, depression, there's counselors and support there. So, you, you have the initial entry into the PASS program, but the students and the families can get multiple supports in place if something is about that, so...
And I think we also can't forget about the work that, for the last almost twelve years, that the Beacon Coalition has been doing.
Yes, exactly.
And they have their quarterly meeting this Thursday at the Brown School, would encourage anyone who's interested in these kinds of issues. We're in completing our second year of a tower grant. Tower Foundation has supported Tina Vos and the work that she's been doing in the broader Newburyport community on addiction and asset building and positive behavior. So, I think that there's been a tremendous amount of work that we're doing, and there's a good partnership with the schools also, in terms of working with students around these issues as things come up. It might be helpful to have, and it did talk for a few minutes at the vaping forum, but there were, you know, there was, we could have been there for hours, you know, with all the information that people wanted to share, but maybe inviting her to come to a school committee meeting too, to be able to talk about the work of the Beacon Coalition and what they're doing to address some of these initiatives or issues.
And I would have to a hundred percent agree with Mayor Holliday, and that's what makes our community so unique. I think when there is a problem or an issue, all of these different organizations come together, and the youth services, Nene Agwans, been instrumental in a lot of this programming, so...
And the expansion of Link House, in terms of the work that they're doing, is really, really significant, so, yeah. And the other piece is that, you know, just, I mean, it's an opioid issue, but, you know, we just received a six-hundred-thousand Department of Justice grant to expand the work we're doing with the police departments and hospitals, and recovery coaches for people who have, who overdosed, they're tracked now within their home community. So, I mean, there's a lot of work going on in this area within our community.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm gonna talk to you about a couple of things. The first is a student celebration, that's actually become kind of a community, school community celebration. And that, this year, we had this Seventh Annual International Cultural Day at the high school, and I just wanted to give you a little background about how that started. Seven years ago, we had some English learner students who had gone to their teacher at the high school and said that they were doing college applications, and they didn't have any clubs to put on their college application, because there wasn't anything that they really related to in the school, and they were very upset about having the absence of that on their application. So, that was the birth of the international club. So, she explained to them, well, we can start a club, we can start a different club that you could be involved in, and what would you like that to look like? And so, they started the international club, and it has grown over the years. And it's a great day of celebration. They used to do it at the end of the year, where everybody made food of their culture, and it was a time for them to come together and to share a piece of their culture, and we know how people love to do that by engaging in some wonderful food. But then it was, it started to get really well-attended. The teachers started to say, I, I wanna come to that, I wanna learn more about that. So, they decided to move it to the beginning of the year, and the students make food, and now some of the teachers make food, and everybody comes together and they tell their story. And, and they get to learn from one another and celebrate the ways that we're different and what we can learn from our differences. So, it's a great day, everybody loves it. Teachers were lined up in the hall, Mr. Gallagher was there, he was in the hall. I think we're going to have to move it to a larger venue.
Cut to the head of the line, because it was full.
But it was, it's really a nice way to celebrate the variety of cultures that we have in our school. It's a high school event. This year, there were six cultures represented, the Brazilian, Mexican, Nepali, Puerto Rican, and Greek cultures at the event. So, it was great fun had by all. So, it, I, it's nice, it's a really nice day. And the second thing I wanted to talk to you about is just some of the curriculum work that we're getting going in the district. As you know, we've focused on our strategic plan over the last several years, and we've been building kind of big idea thinking. We've been looking at what the latest research tells us about education, we've spent a lot of time in our discussions around reimagining teaching and learning. And then last year, we started our work with skill-based education. And, and as you know, we had about seventy teachers who have already participated in cohorts one and two around skill-based education. But the further we got into this work, the more evident it became that maybe we needed to step back a little bit and take pulse of how we were doing with our alignment to the standards, and if we really all were in consensus about what the essential standards are, that we're basing all of this skill-based work on. So, we're starting that with something we've called the Curriculum Pulse, and our teachers during the half-days are working in professional learning communities, and they are first identifying on their own, using, you know, a basic spreadsheet checklist, what standards they're teaching to mastery, what standards they're partially teaching that may be supporting standards, and what standards they're not teaching at all or very infrequently touch upon. And then those professional learning communities are coming together, and they're having really good dialogue about what constitutes an essential, an essential standard, coming to agreement about what those essential standards are. And then they have their curriculum leader, who will actually fill out the final spreadsheet that represents that PLC, and then that gets submitted, and after we have some consensus around that, and that will start our database. And we're building a database around it, and from there, we are going to continue to build the curriculum by identifying the skills associated with those standards, common assessments around those skills, and eventually the units, the skills-based units that are attached. So, this is the first piece. I just wanted to fill you in on how the process is getting started and how it connects to the other work that we've been doing in the district.
Any questions? Onto the superintendent's report.
Flying by, you lost your dollar, though.
I, I don't believe the dollar exists. I've never seen it.
Well, we have some great things that are going on in the district. It's part of the Friday memo you've all have read up, I just highlight some real important work, you know, with essential partners. The other really neat thing about, not only they helping us with the constructive dialogue, but the other high school that we're partnering with across the country is a very conservative type of area in our country. And so, I think those conversations are gonna be very rich with our high school students and that high school students and the teachers, because they come from a different place. So, I think that's gonna give our students a great opportunity, real-world experience. And as we talk about a real-world experience, which ties into One World Strong, and working with Dave Forty Year, who was part of the Peace Awards last year. So, we are partnering with one of the, I think, the first United States school partnering with the Somaliyan School District, and we just begin those conversations. So, we've met with our, you know, through, obviously, we didn't fly over to Somalia, but through the internet, we Skyped with the superintendent and the principals, and our idea, we right now have eight teachers representing each grade level, that'll be working with a sister school in classrooms in Somalia, and we're working on bringing the teachers together. We brought the principals together at our last leadership cabinet, and now, we're gonna start to bring the teachers together. So, the idea of that is to really bring two worlds, two cultures, totally different cultures, together, and then to develop a partnership. So, we're working out the details of that and how that's gonna look, but this, this is at a bigger level than just school system. Both state departments are really excited about this opportunity. The Somaliyan government is really excited that we're partnering with their students and teachers. So, I think this has really opened up really great possibilities, other than just what our students are really gonna get out of this. But we already had Angela, who was part of that conference call also, and we already had a great conversations about the differences from each school system, but also, there's some commonalities too. You know, where, you know, they need more resources, and they need more staff, and we're talking about the different classes, the start times.
They're start time.
Yeah. So, their, their start times are the same as ours, believe it or not, and we talked about late start to them. We said, oh, we're moving later next year, and so I just think that we talk about...
It's worldwide.
Yeah. We talk about diversity and giving our students real-world experiences. I, I don't think it's gonna get any more diverse than working with students and teachers from Somalia. So, we're really excited about that. And the idea of that is cultural, art, and cultural exchange, along with sports diplomacy. So, we're really excited about that. I'm not sure if you had anything else to add, or...
It was, it was wonderful. Their enthusiasm was incredible. They kept thanking us and thanking us, and every time we say, well, we're really excited about the partnership too, no, we're more excited. So, it was really...
I think what was so wonderful about David bringing this to us was the fact, too, that he also brought a representative from Boston who works with micro-businesses and women who are from Somalia, and she came and met with us and talked about how this could really evolve into something else that we do on a broader basis for the community, involving students, but also adults. Like, we have a cultural fair during the summer, and maybe we could tie in some of this and bring some of the Somalia groups from Boston up here. So, there's a lot of possibilities here that could really benefit our community, definitely.
And we're on the same lines, we just, as we were brainstorming, because this is really gonna be grassroots working out, but even just talking with our, our fair that we do in the spring and the summer, really wouldn't be very interesting if we had our students with the Somaliyan students working on an art project that we could display here, so...
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
Very exciting. So, we're trying to work, our next phase is to connect the teachers, and we're looking to try to do that at some point this week, and then from there, let the teachers brainstorm on how to make this happen and be effective, so we'll continue to update you on that. I'm not sure if they have a Somaliyan school committee, but if they do, we'll connect you guys to, to that.
Well, the mayor already invited you and I over again.
That's right. Just looking through, just some other, the annual neighbors' table breakfast that I attended was just awesome. And once again, it talks about the region and the community, people really pulling together for people in need, and some great stories at the annual breakfast. I was asked, and I sent a photo, my right shoulder's still sore, but I played football at third-grade recess. Sometimes you gotta say no, but eventually, and I got through the first recess thing, which wasn't too bad, and I was getting to my car, and they said, Mr. Gallagher, where you going? And I said, oh, we're done. And they're like, there's another recess coming, which I didn't know, so I had to play...
I think there's like six of them.
Yeah, I had to play...
One, two promise there, Mr. Gallagher.
Two games, you know? But we had a lot of fun. And then I also provided you all, as part of the Friday memo, the ADL training, and you can see how extensive that is for both the middle school and the high school student leaders. It's, it's already making a difference. I, I think within our school system, there's one more training that they're gonna be doing, and then I, we're gonna get that program up and running, where they'll start peer mentors, really start taking an active role. And once again, like Principal Wolf said, giving our students opportunities to show leadership and to make a change. And so, we're excited about that. And then just the University of Connecticut, the national grant that we're gonna be part of, which is a five-year grant, but as I gave you the overview of that for literacy, it's just really gonna continue to enhance some of the literacy work we're doing at the pre-K to grade two, and then we're excited about that. And when we have more time, we'll, I think, give an overview for school committee on what that's gonna entail. But there's a lot of, you know, great possibilities with that, and also a lot of funding, but the most important piece with that is the professional development, working with our teachers. So, we're excited about that. I think, did I cover it all there, Mr. Mena Zepak? Oh, a great meeting.
Can I just ask you one question before?
Yes.
Sean, when you, going back to the ADL training?
Yes.
Yeah, I think this is wonderful, we waited a while to get up on the list to bring the facilitators in. Now, will they come back?
Yes.
You know, after they finish this training and sort of check in with how we're doing and how it's sustained?
We're part of the world, correct. So, we're part of, so not only is it just the training, but we're part, we'll be part of the world of difference through the ADL, and it will be an annual, so once our students are trained, then they offer, you know, for those cohorts of kids, you know, yearly trainings. So, we're just part of the system, once we get the initial training.
Thank you.
So, that's gonna be part of our culture, it's not just, and then the other piece is, once we're trained, then we partner with other world-of-difference students from around the area.
Good.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
It's, it's an excellent, excellent program, and, and we're really thankful to be part of it. And then just the last piece, we've been working on the process for an interim special education director and an interim principal at the Brezner Hand, with the retirement of Christina Davis at the Brezner Hand, and the departure of all the hard work that Christina Gentile's been doing. So, our goal was to have an interim in both positions to maintain, you know, the programming, but also to give us an opportunity to advertise, you know, at the peak time in January. So, we're gonna start that process, where we'll advertise a principal and a special education director in January. We'll formulate typical interview process, a committee that will screen the applicants, we'll do our interview process, and then we'll go from there. But I'll have more details for that. But right now, we have Deb O'Connor, who will be filling in as the special education interim. And Deb has an extensive educational background, thirty-four years in special education. She's worked at, right now, she's teaching at AIC, and the courses she's teaching is special education legal issues, special education administration, assessment and methods in special education behavior management. She's also a college supervisor at the Endicott College, and was a special education administrator for twelve years, the sped director in Beverly for twelve years, she was a team coordinator, and then in addition, twenty years of experience as a teacher. So, I think she's gonna be a great asset. I know Deb O'Connor well, and I think she's gonna be a great fit for the district. She's also completed her CAGS, Cambridge College, and moderate disabilities at Leslie University, and special education from Russell Sage College. At the interim at the Brezner Hand is Dr. Lally. At the interim, at the Brezner Hand is Dr. Lally, uh, extensive, once again, administrative, uh, background. She's actually a former superintendent at Hope, bless you, at the, uh, Holbrook School, Public Schools, um, and then also did a interim in New Hampshire, uh, for a kindergarten and four, uh, district. She was also an assistant superintendent, um, principal, assistant principal in Tewksbury, curriculum director in North Reading, uh, was a director at Tufts Universities for reading and, uh, students with learning disabilities. And then she has a, once again, extensive background of, uh, teaching and administrative work, uh, consultant teacher in reading for twenty-one years, uh, during her tenure in Melrose. And then I, I could go on and on, but I think she's going to be another, uh, great fit, um, at the Brez. And we plan on introducing, uh, both, um, staff members to our staff ASAP. And then they're going to start this transition, um, for the next couple of months. So when we start in January after, uh, the vaca- after the winter break, um, everybody will be very familiar. So I think we have, uh, two very experienced, uh, people coming in. And for us, what was really important, it was not just to fill the position to fill the position. I have, I know, uh, both of these individuals, but it, to me, it was really having the right person come in, um, to fill the void for the next six months. And I think they're really going to enhance, uh, a lot of the work that's already going on. So I think the staff and the community's going to be, um, excited to work with these people for the next six months. And then, as I said, we'll do the same type of process, um, for the principal job. We'll advertise at the right time, at the peak time, um, and get some highly qualified candidates to fill those roles. And that's it.
CPAC?
Oh, CPAC. We started with CPAC. Sorry, going on to this.
I interrupted you, sorry.
Oh, you did?
I moved you back, ADL.
So we had, um, a great C, uh, CPAC meeting. I think, uh, you know, I was very encouraged. We had a, a lot of, um, parents there and community members there. And then really just trying to, uh, take a look at the CPAC and, and really work with the organization to, uh, be utilized as a resource for all, uh, parents and students and not just, uh, students, um, with learning disabilities. This is a great organization. There's a lot of enthusiasm at the meeting. And they're really trying to, uh, develop a vision where it's inclusive to help all, all parents and students. So it was a very positive meeting. And Ms. O'Connor, um, will be attending the next one, so I can introduce her to this students and families.
Superintendent Gallagher, if I may press the name of the interim sped person?
It's, uh, Deborah O'Connor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any subcommittee reports? I know the joint ed just met. We had actually a really good conversation about the school district's budget process and how that fits into the city's budget process. And, uh, we talked about the strategic plan and, um, else? That was it?
I spent, uh, four days on my MCAS.
Spent four days on his MCAS presentation, which he didn't get to make.
Didn't even get past the first slide, so.
The first slide looked pretty good though, Sean.
It did.
We're excited to see the rest of it unfold.
Can't wait. And where are we going to see it unfold, Sean?
At the.
The retreat, at the retreat. Our next school committee meeting will be in retreat. Where is that retreat?
It's going to be right in this.
Right in this, right.
Important to note for people that we will not be having a business meeting.
Yeah, we won't be having, it won't be a business meeting in retreat.
We did, actually with the joint, uh, joint ed meeting, it was a great meeting in the sense of really taking a look at the strategic plan and some of the big, big vision and big picture items, uh, down the road in the next three to five years. And at the same time, uh, we really talked about the budget process and kind of how we've been utilizing that and make it very inclusive, so. And as part of our meeting, I think it's on the nineteenth, um, and we'd really like to highlight some of those, the strategic plan with the big picture items for the next three to five years, which will part, will be part of our presentation.
We should meet on the, for the nineteenth.
Yes.
So, so we have the eighteenth is the retreat.
Correct.
The nineteenth is the joint meeting. Six o'clock dinner at the Senior Center, seven o'clock is the meeting.
Yes.
Yeah?
I don't know. Yeah, I'm always.
Pam, Pam always says.
She does something great and surprises us.
That's right.
Sure, it will be wonderful. She always does a good job.
I think, I think there's pasta.
I shouldn't wear white then.
No. No. Does anybody have any other, were there any other reports? Do I have?
Did we policy meet when I was away?
Um, we recorded last, at the last meeting.
NHS Law of Fame this week.
You're all famed?
I'll be there. So Sean and I will be there Thursday. Good class going in.
Everyone needs to vote tomorrow.
It's election day.
Tomorrow.
Yes. Don't forget.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
No second, we can't.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ananously in favor of adjournment.